At this time, I will call to orders the January 7th, 2021 meeting for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One thing I always appreciate about the flag salute, I think all of us take more meaning to it and pause to think about the importance of the liberties we have. Also, in this particular setting, we've got this backdrop where it shows quite a few things as far as out at the Eisenhower Presidential Library and President Eisenhower and the place of meditation where he's laid to rest. And, you know, it's certainly a reminder of what a great heritage our country has, but also of what we have here in Dickinson County, here in Abeling, with the Presidential Library. Okay, the first item I have is the approval of the agenda, and we do not have any additions to the agenda, so I would move that we approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the December 31st meeting. It also includes the payroll of $333,598.36, the abatements of $354.84, and added tax of $97.68.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or anything to be set aside for discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commission comments and committee reports. Craig, we'll start with you.
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Ron?
Just reports on the number of contacts we've been received from individuals throughout Dixon County regard to face masks. And as I reported earlier to the commission, obviously, there was more not in favor of having the face mask than those are in favor. So there was quite a bit of discussion involving schools and so on and so forth, but it's obviously throughout the county that there was a lot of opposition to face masks.
Okay. Earlier this morning, we had our work-study session. Diane Greeno was here with HR. She gave us an update on our payroll plan, and we have that in steps, but also just did a review of that, and it's important that we stay competitive. So we're very methodical about that, and when you think about the investment you have in your employees, the training they have, the experience they have, it is something that we're very much aware and appreciative of them. Also, Tim Holm had stopped in, and he had another commitment, but just wanted to let us know that at his dealerships that he has, not just in Abeling alone, but a couple in other cities, that they are abiding by the regulations as far as the face mask and just the importance of everyone trying to work together. And so he feels like his operation or business is operating smoothly and adapting to that. So we also had that. I did have a letter from Trevor Witt, and he is a city commissioner, and I thought it was something that I'd like to share. It kind of stood out. He just mentioned with all the negativity that we have right now with some government officials that has taken place in the last year, he thought it was of great importance to acknowledge some of the good things going on in our community. And the particular item that he was referring to was that there are some improvements going on out at Sterling Hall. Some of those have to do with the fact that we're going to relocate some of our operations there while the renovations are taking place, but also through some of the funding that we received, the county was able to have some improvements and add to the bathroom capacity and the showers. It also can be suitable, the area being built for emergency shelter. And of course, I think all of us at various times have been out there during fair events. And so anyway, it's an improvement that just happens to take place because we did have some of those COVID funds available that were given to us, but also it's something that's going to benefit all of us for a long time. And I think all of us, you know, also kind of stand with him on the fact that there are a lot of negative things and a lot of challenges going on, but whether it's something small or big, we need to celebrate and remember some of the good things that are happening and state a task on those things. Also, as Commissioner Roller mentioned, I also have received numerous texts and emails and regarding the mask situation, and my numbers are probably a little bit different than his, and maybe I receive a few more. I think people have an easier time finding me in town or know my cell number, which is fine, or email. And so I've kind of been hearing it from both sides, that, you know, we need to be safe and keep restrictions in place, and a few question, why did we lower the bar or allow people to, you know, take the fine aspect out of it? And then again, I've had people say, you know, we're very appreciative that you did take some steps to make things a little bit more reasonable. And then, of course, I also have received information from people where they say, you know, we just need to eliminate it completely. So we, you know, we continue to receive information from all of you and welcome your comments. That's all I have. Were there any other comments from the commission or anything that you have received you'd want to bring up at this time? So we'll move on. The next portion of the meeting has to do with petitions and proclamations, which we do not have any proclamations. Occasionally, we do get those to recognize certain groups. But we also, this is the time we have for public comments, and if you keep your comments five minutes or less, if something's kind of been stated where it's going to be repetition and so on, perhaps there's a spokesperson, but anyway, as you come up to the podium, if you would give your name and address and your comments, and we've kind of started a habit, Gina sits on the front row, so do you want to lead us on?
I'm nervous, and if I go first and I'm done and I don't get anxiety listening to everybody else.
Okay, so we're at that point. If you have a comment or update.
I get my anxiety. This is for everybody.
And I didn't notice you were nervous, so.
Gina Dalton, 418 Northwest, but. Okay, I have a question for you guys that I'm going to ask you, but not to answer right away. I'll ask you what your answer is at the end. How important do you think equality education is, 1 to 10, 10 being the highest, so from everybody? And then I want to apologize because I know what Lynn does, but I don't know what you two, do you have business? What your business is? I'm assuming maybe farmers, whatever.
I'm retired civil servant farm. Loaded that cattle this morning. That's pretty no luck in the workplace.
Good for you, you're retarded. Good for you.
You didn't say retarded, did you?
No, I said retired.
Okay, okay.
I said retired. But I know you're not doing nothing. I know you're not doing nothing. Okay, so this question, you could, I screwed up here already. See how nervous I am? So I want to know what you guys think is the quality education question, 1 to 10. How important is it?
Well, obviously, very high.
Oh, hey, I'd put nine on it, just from the standpoint that there are some people that practicality get a lot accomplished without education, but.
They do, and I agree with that.
But education pushes you.
I agree with that too.
That launches you a lot further.
I agree with that too. And this one I want you to think of and not answer right now. Is your business, is your business more important than his business or your business more important than your business? Don't answer right now. Think about it. Okay, now I have some questions. Is the school exempt from the mandates? Is the school exempt from mandates? Can you tell us exactly where that is in the mandate? Where it specifically says that the school system is exempt from these rules and whatever they are.
I don't have it printed. Maybe they're in the county itself.
Okay. I'd like to know where it says specifically that the schools are exempt from that. And if it's not clear in the mandate that they are, if we can make it clear in the mandate. And then I know that the Abeling School has weekly meetings with Dr. Holmes. Is there any other, is there any other large groups that have to meet with him on a weekly basis? Is he checking in with, is he checking in with Don's Tire weekly? Is he checking in with Holm Automotive weekly? Is he checking in with West Country Mart weekly? Is he checking in with everybody weekly or just the school?
Well, if you put like an organizational charge, I mean, you might say, the health department is who he probably visits with the most, and then also he visits on a state level and gets that information. But from a practicality standpoint, to just try to concentrate that, I mean, he does get involved with some conference-type calls or media information, and so school nurses, superintendents of schools.
I think that he has a weekly call with Abeling.
Superintendents of schools. And but from a practical standpoint, I mean, none of us could go visit individually with lots and lots of groups.
Okay, so I think that he does have a weekly with Abeling Schools, and is that mandatory that they do that? Is that mandatory? Because not all districts are doing that. Not all, not all districts are doing that. Oh my gosh. We would like to see the data from the schools to compare numbers and what others are doing. Is this school better and what are they doing and can we do something like that? So my question I want you to answer about the businesses, whose business is more important out there?
I don't think any, I think they're all important. To say one's more important than the other is ludicrous.
Correct. Correct. Oh, I think that's correct. But I think that's correct, Ron. So if liquor, and I don't want to say anything bad about liquor stores, I don't care, I don't care, but they're the ones that we call essential. Liquor stores are essential. Would we not consider education essential? Shouldn't we consider schools essential and have those workers from the bottom to the top or top to bottom called essential? And if they are essential, then they should be exempt from this mandate, and they should be able to, the school board should be able to make their own decisions on how they do their quarantine, how they handle all this stuff. So either we label them essential workers because education's important, or we drop the mandate so they can do their business the way that they need to do their business.
Well, thank you for your comments.
And I just want to, what you said, you referenced, whatever you said about the investment to the staff, that it's important to do those things because it's a great investment in your staff, education's a great investment for those kids to be able to grow up productive citizens and everything, so.
Oh, don't go anywhere. I want to have a little discussion here. Do we have jurisdiction over the school board?
No.
So does the school board not take care of their own affairs?
Yes.
Okay, so would we intervene by making decisions for the school board?
The only authority that we would have over the school districts would have come to a medical order under Chapter 65 of the statutes.
Okay.
And there haven't been any of those issued yet.
I was just told by somebody in the school system that they can't make any decisions because Holmes will put the hammer down on it, and then, so I said, how can you do that? Aren't you pays your own? So anyways, I just, I would like you to consider the schools essential, either take them out, consider them essential, get rid of the mandate so they can do their job and not have to worry about if they make a wrong step, they're going to get completely shut down.
I do know, and probably most of you are aware of this, but even back in the summer, you might say all of the stakeholders or a lot of the people that were going to be involved, from city managers and city representatives and school nurses and superintendents, as well as some school board members, and all of them were brought to the table saying, you know, we've got this challenge and we need to start working towards it. So it hasn't been something where it's just kind of at the end been added on as far as that piece. I mean, it's, there was an organized effort, you might say, to try to bring everyone to the table and start that thought process, and it's taken place in many ways, but, okay, yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Lynn. I'm Brian Harris, 606 Maple Street here in Abeling, and who, as I said before, have been a decent guy all my life, and I value each and every citizen in this county, and it is important. One thing I'll bring up to you, and I'm going to quote here a statement that wisdom, like inheritance, is a good thing. Everyone that lives under the sun or sees the sun benefits from that. So it's important to use wisdom whenever decisions we're working on and not let emotion throw the process in an equation. And that's why I'm going to throw two things out to you. One is that the first thing I'll justify what I'm saying is, and I've said this before, the DK Health Ordinance 1102, it needs to go away. There's not a reason where the wisdom side of this that is there is only based on the emotional side. The wisdom side to tell you that, and the science side of the aspect to tell you that the only way we will stop this disease is to have enough individuals that have antibodies against this disease, and that's the only way the process will stop. This mask, and I'm going to say, and I'm going to take it to one step further than this mask, because an N95 mask is what surgeons would use. Those are important ones to stop the bacterial infections. They will not stop the viral infections. The pore size, and I'm going to throw the science side of this, the pore size of an N95 mask is at 300 nanometers opening size. The size of a coronavirus is 120 nanometers size. So basically, you can shove three viruses in that pore size on an ongoing basis. So I ask you, what value is this when it comes to disease? So that's something to keep in mind with that aspect, is that it does not, the only way, and I heard from a couple of you, thank you for your response, the letters I sent in to you, and so if you haven't read my email, if I'm going through the science aspect of this whole process, is that, again, our immunity is the only thing that's going to stop the disease. Using things to stop the challenge, like hand sanitizer, is an excellent thing, but each individual needs to take responsibility for themselves and not rely on a false security blanket thrown out is the only way to stop this, is for everybody to wear one of these. When I just told you the science, the coronavirus is almost, is almost a third of the size of the pore opening of an N95 mask. So there's no reason to have this in place. Individuals take responsibility for themselves of improving their immune system, improving the defense that I found and programmed, we're doing to help individuals build up their immunity, build up the defense, because you cannot stop a virus from challenging you. It can happen, unless, and somebody you've seen tonight, if you read my email, unless you want to live in an environmental bubble, and if you live in an environmental bubble, yes, you can stop a purified environmental bubble. But if you go beyond that, as soon as you walk out of an environmental bubble, it's two things going to happen. You're going to get seriously ill from the minor diseases that we have because you have not been exposed, and our immune system is not being built up to strengthen against those minor diseases, or the individual will be succumbed to death due to the fact that their immune system couldn't handle the challenge. And that's from the common diseases like our colds or ones that are things of that nature. So that's why I throw out to you is, there's no reason to have a mask ordinance involved. So I ask you two things. One is to eliminate this. Two is not to follow the governor's lead, showing that teachers are not essential workers in our society. So I'd ask you, if you can, if Dr. Holmes can override this, is put teachers in the category of essential workers, so if they wish to have a vaccine for protection, then have them get to that then. If he can override the governor's move, to do it immediately if we have the doses to give them. So that is another thing I throw out to you. One, eliminate this ordinance, DK Health Ordinance 1102, and any other ordinance that fall into the process, following the governor. And two, get the teachers involved into the central worker so they can help and do the most important thing that we have in our community, is educating our kids so they may become important educated citizens. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning. Lauren Megan Armstrong, 1173 Old Forty, Abeling. I come to you this morning with my stomach in knots because I had a chance to look over that $3.6 million spent here in Dickinson County for Sparks money, and for anybody not familiar with that, that's strengthening people and revitalizing Kansas. And my impression that the purpose of those funds were to kind of help our community move along with this pandemic, and quoted from their site was that it's helped address the health and economic challenges inflicted by COVID-19. And so when I started going through those numbers, out of that $3.6 million, and I was really hoping the reflector chronicle was here because I think this would be an interesting piece for them to cover, but I'll afford those informations to them, the county ended up keeping about half of it to invest in outdated infrastructure. I don't think that that was part of the addressing health and economic challenges. And I keep going back to why, what would be the motivation of our county to keep us masked up and in compliance with the governor and in compliance with these state mandates? It's because we got a big chunk of money, and we got a lot of what we wanted to look as free money, and we spent it on outdated infrastructure. We didn't spend it on addressing health and economic challenges. And I'll get down to the nitty-gritty. We did buy an ambulance, but that was already on the board to potentially buy for about 20% of that money that was state-county. We remodeled Sterling Hall for 17% of that, the same building that county would be moving into temporarily, so the old budget out of 2020 would have allocated for some of those modifications. So it was a great opportunity for the county to avoid some costs for remodeling Sterling Hall by using this COVID money instead. I think that was the wrong choice. There was also $263,000 paid out to payroll for public health and safety specifically, and I'm sure you guys have seen these numbers, but maybe a refresher would help. There was about $59,000 paid out to Mr. Holman here at the county administrator, and there were a few questions asked about, well, how did that money get spent? And it was explained to me that that was a 70% reimbursement of their time. I ran the numbers again, and I said, okay, well, five months divided into that $59,000, that's coming out to about $15,000, $12,000 a month in COVID money to one person, and if that was 70% of their income, that person should be making about $180,000. Now, I haven't requested the salary schedule yet, but I'm pretty sure that's going to be more than 70% of that particular person's wage. And so I'm a little concerned that the five or six stakeholders in this, or the county administrator, the emergency manager, the budget director, the EMS health director, deputy director of public health, the public health officer also had a $20,000 check written to him, but that's written as other, so that wouldn't have been a reimbursement. I don't know what that's for. Here it says it's fees for case review, meetings, and radio interviews. That money ended in December. My concern is, is if we paid this much money in five months, that's $263,000, and you just had a payroll review this morning, do we have another $263,000 to throw at COVID tracking when on average, looking at the cases per month, the most we've had per month are a little over 35? 35 people, that's a maximum number of people who have SIP in one day during this whole pandemic, not thousands like the dashboard says. We spent $263,000 on people to give us a dashboard that has next to no information that's useful for us to make choices in our daily lives. That's unacceptable. We spent another $325,000 to build a storage building for the COVID ambulance and response trailers and PPE. Again, updating outdated infrastructure is what we use this for. We didn't use this for the health and welfare and building up our businesses here in the recovery of COVID-19. I think our taxpayers, I think our county members, our citizens deserve an explanation for how these numbers were coming about. I think it needs to be made public. I think there needs to be some under reports that get shared because I don't find this to be acceptable for case rates that don't explain this very, like, don't justify that kind of money. We should have had multiple drive-through COVID testing stations if that was really what was going to keep people healthy. We should have drive-through antibody testing if we think that that's an issue. If we find out that 60%, 70% of our population's already been exposed, we're safe, but by not knowing and keeping that question mark there, we continue further with this health mandate that we may not even need, but we've spent, we've already spent a quarter of a million dollars on nothing. And now there's no money left. What's your game plan going forward? I think that that's a fair question. Thank you, guys.
I think some of that, I mean, I can address, but Janelle is here between Brad. I think they have a few more specifics, but we did send out request opportunities to the cities and the schools, and to be creative, but also just, you know, identify your specific needs. And then we also had money that we did the same thing for the county, but from my understanding, we did not turn down any requests from a school or a city. And that was money that we had that also at the time, there's an extension now, but at the time, there was a December 31st deadline, so everything had to be identified, dollar numbers put to it, had to be reviewed locally by the guidelines, but also would go to the state for their review and approval. And so I don't know that, it didn't happen here. I know of a couple other counties where they had some situations where it did not meet the guidelines, and so the request was turned down. But in regards to the $3.6 million, I don't know, Brad, would you want to address some of the issues you brought up, or Janelle, either one between the two of you, or?
I would, yes, as a matter of fact. First of all, on the salaries, I can show you how much extra money that I, John Holgren, Tancy, Janelle, that's how much extra money we got out of this. The money reimbursed the county for a portion of our salaries. We got no extra bonus, we got, that you're leaving to, at least that's the way I took it. And it was to pay for the percentage of the job that we have done related to COVID since the 1st of March. I can tell you that 70% of my job since the 1st of March has not been for COVID. It's been more than 70%. So the purpose behind that was to reimburse the county so that the 70% that we saved could be pushed forward in our capital plan or for this year, because we knew there wasn't any COVID money available to help with some of those expenses. So the county saved that amount of money, whatever it was, on those salaries because the federal government paid us that money.
So it's a carryover.
It was carried over, yes. Janelle, correct me if I state anything wrong, so.
Nope, you're right.
As far as the aging infrastructure, we didn't correct any aging infrastructure at Sterling Hall. We put an addition onto it that has been needed so that it can be used as an emergency shelter. We have used it in the past as an emergency shelter for the storm, ice storm of 2006, if everyone remembers. We had 100-plus people sleeping in there at night for a week plus while they were displaced from their homes. They had no showers. I don't know how many of you would like to stay in a place away from home without a shower for a week, but it doesn't sound appealing to me. We have known since that time that that was a priority to try to do that. Now, we had an option. We could raise taxes to come up with that money and build a shelter. and build a shelter or addition to do that. That's not appealing to me either. I paid taxes. Or we had this money available. We know that there's a high propensity. We may need, if things continue to progress as they are and the vaccine doesn't get out, we may have to set up a shelter for COVID patients. We only have one facility to do that, and that's Sterling Hall and the Harrington Public Building Community Center. So we wanted it to be equipped, and that's why we decided to use some of that money to add on with bathrooms and shelters. Now, everybody that's used Sterling Hall knows it's short of bathrooms anyhow. So that's a bonus that we're modifying the facility to use for the community going forward with COVID money. The other part of that aging infrastructure, the building that we're putting up down at our highway department, county yard, is not replacing aging infrastructure. It's a new building to house all this stuff that we are getting to deal with COVID, the PPE, the pallet's full of stuff that we've got. We've got it sitting everywhere where it shouldn't be, and we just don't have the room. And this will allow us to do that and have a facility to put it in. So Janelle, do you have anything to add on the budget stuff?
I would say that we also followed the federal guidelines put out by the U.S. Treasury because they're the department in the federal government that's managing or administering the grant funds down through the state, down to us. We had numerous eyes on this. It was approved by our board, by the state board. We followed the guidelines that we needed to do, so.
And we started out, as you remember, when this money became available, having meetings with you on Thursdays with Janelle and I in the room with you going through it. We didn't have the audience, which you were welcome to come to those meetings as well. They were public, and we went through this, and we told you what our strategy was and what we wanted to utilize. And it was approved, and that's where we went forward. And to stand here and Monday morning, or maybe even the following week quarterback, that we didn't do it right. You had the opportunity to come in and put your piece in. So I take exception to the fact that we did something improper. We're doing our best like everybody else. And so I think our expenditures were good. We did meet early on with the school districts. When we heard this money was available, within one week, we set up a meeting at Sterling Hall with all the school districts and the city officials. We said, this meeting, this money's coming. What do you need to help deal with the issues of COVID? And over the next couple of months, when the money became available, we were able to fund every request from every school district and every city. We turned nobody down. They took priority over our expenses, in my mind, and we gave them every red cent they asked for. Nobody was turned down, so.
Did Harrington receive the most money, their school district?
The Harrington School District did, yes.
Yes.
And see, that was an example where, I mean, they just identified more things and put in more requests. And I did talk to a few people later that mentioned, you know, maybe they should have thought about more things that they could do. The ambulance that we have, of course, ambulances are very expensive, but, I mean, some of these things we had planned for, but it had an ultraviolet feature in it. And so now the protocol's so much different. For example, if someone calls 911, you know, instead of trying to determine who's witnessed the accident or the situation or the condition of the patient or person that they're going out to serve, you know, then now they have also a COVID protocol because we need to protect our EMS people. And of course, this has kind of been a standard procedure anyway. I mean, obviously, if the ambulance goes out, you have to disinfect and do everything possible because you can't have these cross-contaminations from one person to another, you know, that's picked up next. And so it's very intensive. But with the COVID possibility, it became more intense that that had to be done. So that was actually a kind of a cost savings measure or time-saving measure. And it just so happened that that was available. Now, having said all of this, back when we met in July for our regular budget to establish the budget for the year, this calendar year, and you're trying to project out, you know, what's it going to look like six months in advance and so on? I mean, we established a budget to, that included the salaries for our key individuals, and I mean, everybody in the county. And so the money that, for example, that, say, Brad received, that was regular money he was going to pay or be paid. But instead of coming from the general fund, we actually, you might say, got a reimbursement. So that money is moved into this year. And that's a little bit of a savings carryover. But we can take that into account when we meet this coming July and try to look at our budget because we have some of that money that's carried over. And I don't know that the state or the feds will come up with any money next year. You know, that's something we'll find out. If it happens, it happens. But we have to work on the basis that it may not happen. But when we did receive this money, and every county did, it was based on population. So Celine County had quite a bit more than what we had. Clay County had less, you know, and so on. And it's based on population. But also on that money, when it was put forth, if it was not spoken for and did not meet the criteria, then the state said, well, we'd be willing, you know, give it back to us and we'll find a place for it. And so it was kind of an opportunity to try to address our needs the best we could locally. And we involved all of the school districts. And so the superintendents were there, and of course, they were wanting to make things as safe as possible for their students and their teachers and their staff. And so, you know, everybody tried to think, okay, this is what we're going to do. But, you know, keep in mind, you know, it's the same thing. When I watch football on TV like a lot of you do, you know, something goes wrong in the fourth quarter, it's pretty easy the next day to say, oh, gosh, I wish the quarterback would have done this or they would have called this play and so on. But having said that, you know, I think if there is anything specific, you know, come in and visit with us. And I mean, we can, we'll pin it down exactly where the money was used and how it was used. And, you know, there's a paper trail there, and we knew it was there. And so we did everything we could to make it right. And, you know, we'll have our general audit that's going to take place anyway. It takes place for every county. And so, you know, we realized there's scrutiny there, but there's also guidelines there. But we also recognize there's opportunity to address the issue the best way we could for our county.
Janelle, you've been through how many audits already on those funds, the distribution of those funds?
The state gets a monthly report that they review and then ask questions, so.
Yeah, okay.
I would also just comment on Brian and Gina's questions. When we started this back in March and April, we started having weekly video conferences with all the school districts. We still do those today. We just did the first one after the holidays yesterday at 3:30. And we have all five school districts, the superintendents, and the school nurses on video chat with us in the health department, which includes our senior nurse and our director. Dr. Holmes, if he's available, will zoom in to answer any questions. Sometimes he is able, sometimes he's not. And we meet with him on a weekly basis. You're correct. It's not just Aviling. It's all five school districts. And we go through how things are working there, any questions they have, any advice or directives that we can give them to help them through what their challenges are. We have made Dr. Holmes available to each one of those school nurses on a call basis since the beginning. He gets calls all the time, as Lynn can attest. He's been in on a couple of our chat, or not chat, but our text strings over the past couple of months to where we'll all be getting questions and issues. School issues don't just come up once a week. They're every day, multiple times a day. So it'll be 10, 11 o'clock at night, and we're communicating between everybody trying to solve an issue that's in the best interest of everybody. So we have been communicating with them constantly. We also know that school individuals, school staff are priority. In our minds, they are above essential workers. We didn't create that hierarchy. That came from the state. We don't agree with it any more than anybody in this room does. We have been on the meeting yesterday. John asked all five of our, well, four of our superintendents, because I don't think Hope was on, four of our superintendents by the first of next week, get us a list of how many vaccines you need for your staff. Because we are going to bump them up whether the state says to or not. And we'll take the risk of getting in trouble with the state.
Excellent.
The state's position is they want all Phase 1 workers done first before they go to the Phase 2 workers, which is just stupid. Say it on the record, stupid. We don't see it that way. They want, theoretically, they want us to wait until Sedgwick County has done all their Phase 1 people, like 800,000, before we can go to our second level people. We've got our Phase 1 done. We started doing Phase 2, and we've got a few doses they're doing today that we went to Topeka last night and got. And so as they come in, hopefully by the first of the month, we can be in schools. And we've told them, we'll be on site, and we're going to do your staff. And so that's our goal.
Thank you.
We're on the same shoe as you guys. I mean, we're not ignorant to this. We're just fighting a battle where if we don't do it politically correct, they could pull all of our vaccines and not give us any. I think that may be far-fetched, but they could do it. So we've got to kind of walk that line. And so, yeah, that's where we're at. And so they're top of the list. They're the next ones to get it, so. And frankly, they're above firefighters and other people as far as we're concerned because we've got to get kids in school.
I'll mention one example too, and Brad kind of alluded to it. But there was supposed to be some vaccines that were to be delivered to the health department yesterday afternoon. And as it got to late afternoon, they had not arrived. And so then you've got the dilemma because you have people that have appointments set up for their first vaccine, which automatically triggers there'll be a second appointment for the follow-up. And so if that first vaccine doesn't arrive when it's supposed to arrive, and then you have all these people to notify. And Dr. Holmes, in that particular instance, made some phone calls. And for whatever reason on their distribution, they had not got the vaccines out when they said they would, but they were in Topeka. And so arrangements were made by someone at Topeka. And, you know, I know probably lots of people in this room. You don't look at the clock and you work past 5 when you have to work past 5 or 6 or whatever it is. But anyway, someone from Topeka was willing to drive the vaccines partway. And then John Holgren went ahead and drove to pick up the vaccines. And I think a lot of times, some of our health department, they're going above and beyond. And, you know, he got back a little bit later, and plus he had to secure the vaccines and, you know, do the handling, the documentation and so on. But anyway, he was able to accomplish all of that. And, you know, having said that, since he is salaried, just as Brad is salaried, you know, if he leaves at 5 o'clock, he's going to get paid the same as if he happens to stay till 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. And if he has to come in on a weekend and work on the weekends and really with the COVID-related activities, there's just been lots and lots of extra hours. And I have been in on some of the text messages and conversations that take place over the weekends. And so, you know, it's not something where they're watching the clock. I mean, they, the salary, they were paid a couple of years ago. You know, they actually logged a lot fewer hours. And, you know, now since they're salaried people, and it's the same way with the cities, and I'm sure at the schools. I mean, if you're a salaried person and you work extra hours, there's not any overtime. There's not any, that's not a consideration. You work on a salary. So, okay. Kind of got off on a few rabbit trails, but wanted to, you know, answer your questions and address some of your concerns. And, you know, don't hesitate to, I mean, get ahold of me, and we can set up an appointment and visit with Janelle or whatever we have to do to any specifics on the budget. Because, I mean, that's of high importance to us, and I mean, it's, that's one of the most important documents we have in the county. Yes, sir.
Yes, thanks for, and I appreciate you throwing the sand on that because the reason we're here now and we weren't here earlier is. Greg Wilson, South Aviling, law. The reason we weren't here earlier is we trusted you guys to run the county like you always have been, and you've done a good job. But we're here because, now, because when you were trying to fine us and shut businesses down, that's why we're here. It wasn't because we didn't care earlier. We just trusted you to run it. And I appreciate that you told us that you didn't make any money off COVID. But I do know one person that has. And it's really upsetting to me to hear that he made $10,000 a month on the nine months that I know about, and $60,000 of it was COVID. Now, he's not here to defend himself, but I don't really, this is public knowledge. He's making $2,900 a month, it looks like, for to be a coroner. And he hasn't showed up to at least nine unattended deaths, at least. So, and then he's charging, I don't know how much you guys are paying him an hour, but there is no way he could physically do four jobs, Junction City Emergency Room, the hospital, coroner, and CHO, and do any of those jobs any good if he's actually putting time in. But for him to make $10,000 a month and $6,000 of it's COVID, that is outrageous. And I'm glad to hear that nobody else made any money off of COVID. And I assume you said that, so I'll trust that that's true. But this man that broke all the rules, that he set up, traveled outstate, came back, no quarantine, got sick, I don't know how, he might have quarantined then. I have no idea. But legally, he didn't have to because he's medical. My daughter can have COVID and still go to work, and that's crazy. But the point is, I was trying to make is, how can a person morally or ethically make that kind of money off a pandemic? And there is no way physically he was able to put that many hours in and do all four jobs. So that is the one I think that we all question. And for one person to have that much authority and to make that kind of money is morally and ethically wrong. And that is why I got involved. That's the number one reason. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here either. But then everything started, you know, it's just, everybody's upset and in the county and scared. At first, I was scared. I was the first one to mask up. We are not anti-mask, by the way. I keep telling you guys that. I was the first one to mask up, went into John Deere, Napa. Everybody looked at me kind of funny. Well, I took it serious, and I haven't had a dust mask sitting in my truck. And guess what? It says N95 on it. I've had it for a year. But I studied. For 60 days, I didn't even know anybody that got it. For another 60, I didn't know anybody that had died from it. And then now they're throwing everything into PIC, pneumonia, influenza, and COVID. So the numbers are skewed terribly. I'm getting off topic, but I just want you to know that that is why we're here. Because at first, you guys weren't trying to fine us, and you weren't trying to shut businesses down. And I know it's not you guys, but one man was trying to do that. And the people stood up, and that's why we're here now, and we will continue to be here. It's not that we didn't care early on, like you might have suggested. We could have been here. Well, we trusted you'd take care of it. And I'm very happy to hear that nobody else made money off this. But the one that did needs to be fired.
Any follow-up or?
Ken Rock, 940 North Road, Hope Kings. I just direct the school system a little bit. I emailed a couple of you gentlemen.
I emailed a couple of you gentlemen and I didn't know if you shared that or not. Couple of instances of, one's a retired school teacher slash coach. Fifth grader was out on the playground and he told the fifth grader, he says, didn't have his mask down. He told the fifth grader, mask up or I'll die. You know, to tell a fifth grader that. And we talked to the, I know we know the parents well, and, and the fifth grader was upset. Another one is, is a middle school, a girls' basketball coach. The girls were practicing, as far as I know, and didn't have their mask up. And he says that the coach says, mask up or you're the reason that such and such died, which an individual had died just a few days earlier. And he mentioned the individual by, by name. And, you know, to put those kids in that kind of frame of mind, I can't imagine that happened to me when I was that age. Another thing, a year ago in February, I got diagnosed with influenza B. It was just a regular doctor's appointment and I had a little bit of a fever. Doctor Sharon says, take your, let's take your temperature. So I did and I had, so he told the nurse to stick a swab up in my brain and a couple minutes later, she said, you, you got influenza B. And I says, what did I do? Well, stay home, don't, it was on a Friday. He said, don't go anywhere over the weekend, you'll be fine. I wonder now if it wasn't maybe COVID. We don't know. But, you know, just, well, it was just sad, you know, the, the, the clinics were full, the hospitals were full of influenza A, B, pneumonia, everything you can imagine. We don't see any of that now. And like, like you said, is, is everything being thrown into one pit? That's, that's my, that's my thought. So just, just a couple of comments and I appreciate the job that you're all doing. I don't want your jobs. You know, you, you've got a tough, you've got a tough road here. You're a, you're going to lose, you're not going to win either way. So I, you know, I appreciate each one of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Don Neville, six, three oh eight, Northwest seventeen. Brad, when you were talking earlier, you referred, I think you said John, was that Ben John Barker?
No, John Holgren.
John Holgren, okay. I did visit with John Barker a little bit the other day and one of their priorities when they return to session is to get our school teachers as status as essential workers. According to him, they're pretty upset about that, the way that's listed now. And when the money on Stedall Hall and everything for the shelter and stuff like that, you know, was that money all governmental projects only? Could have private businesses been involved in shelters or construction or anything like that if it would have been approved by the guidelines?
Janelle, do you have an answer on that, on the guidelines?
I do. It, it can only be used for government projects.
Yeah, right.
School districts are government, yeah.
And?
There was other money came out to, back to EDC that there was for businesses and stuff like that.
And one of the meetings passed, we had a question on the county board of health as to who it all pertains to. And I think Doug was going to check into that. Is there a?
What's that?
The county board of health of who it exists of? Has there been a clarification of that for sure?
There's a county board of health. I don't know what your question is.
Well, at the time we were sitting here at a meeting, there was a vote and we had two advisors, Dr. Holmes and John Holgren, voted for a county board of health decision. And according to state statutes, the way I read it is that they are advisors to the county board of health, which is your commissioners.
At, at that meeting, the commissioners sought their opinion and they were allowed to vote. When we had the hearing over here at the meeting and it was asked, can this board change that? And my opinion was, if you implemented it, you can change it. And they did.
Okay. And some of the, I'm, I'm talking about school kids here, young kids, part of their, I don't know whether you want to call it learning or social, reading faces, reading comments, seeing people smile, seeing, you know, expressions by teachers or by their fellow students or whatever. When, when kids are young, this is extremely, extremely important to their health and well-being. That's something that really needs to be thought about because we could be throwing our kids into a process that could take them years to come out of. So, you know, with that, I'll, I'll leave it alone. I'm, I was very glad to hear that the payments were in lieu of salaries to use COVID money. It's kind of one of them deals that if you don't use it, you're going to lose it possibly. So, uh, kudos for that and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably on the trail. My name's Paige Westfall, nine seven seven sixteen hundred Avon. I'll just apologize right now because I'm somewhere between Forrest Gump and Einstein, probably closer to Forrest Gump. So I don't do the numbers like everybody else has. My priority is my son in the schools. I want him in school and I'm glad to hear that you guys are fighting for them to be essential workers. I think one of the things that you probably should bring up that I haven't heard anybody bring up, and it doesn't necessarily concern my son, but in our county, there are probably children that go to school that that's their safe place. That's where they get a smile, they might get a hug, they get food. And yeah, the school gives out free lunches, but not everybody has somebody to go hit that lunch up for them. And that's their safe place. That's, you know, the one place they're not going to get abused. That's the one place that they're going to get a smile, a hug. I think that should be brought up because a lot of times that's where we see child abuse reported is from your school teachers seeing those kids. A mask can hide a lot of things. You don't know what's going on at home. There's a lot of stresses now on their parents. They don't have, maybe they don't have their jobs. Maybe they're fighting because there's money situations at home. When they go to school, they can get away from that for a little bit. So I'm glad to see that you guys are fighting for this bunch of workers. And I think that you should bring those points up because I think that's sometimes lost in all this. We talk about education, we talk about the socialization. Maybe emotionally, they need to be there because that's their safe place. And, you know, I realize you guys have a hard job. I don't want it. I know exactly where Craig stands. I'm very happy I know where he stands. Do I agree with it? No. But that's okay. Doesn't mean I hate him. Hope he didn't hate me. I mean, we all have different opinions. I know right and wrong, Stan. Not sure about you, Lynn. I've been here a long time and I've seen you talk circles and I think maybe a politician is where you want to be and that's fine. We're, we all do different things. But I think you guys need to keep the key important things thought about. The businesses, if we don't have businesses, we don't have anything in this county. If our kids aren't in school emotionally, education-wise, they're not going to help our county when they grow up. They're not going to want to come back. They're, they're seeing what we're presenting to them. And I was sad last night watching what went on. And I think that's probably why we had two deputies upstairs. And that makes my heart sad. You guys are my neighbors, my, my friends, maybe just acquaintances. But that doesn't mean that we should hate each other and act the way that we are towards each other. Because we're all just trying to get by. And I think we all try, probably need to remember that. When we're texting, a lot of things, texts, emails, they can come off bad. But I think we need to take it down a level and really put what's important in front. And maybe that's not ourselves. Maybe that's somebody else. But our kids don't get a voice. And so who are the voices for them? Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's a lot of discussion back and forth, but just speaking for myself, but it's probably applies to the other commissioners too. I mean, we, we've either voted yes or, or not against something. So I think our vote pretty well tells where we're at, where we've been in the past and we have made some slight adjustments. And it wasn't unanimous, but, but we did make a, a few adjustments. And so I think it pretty well telegraphs where we're at. Anyway, thank you for your comment.
I'd like to say just a couple of things. I think I've had the privilege of working with the Department of Defense for a good many years, career, and I got to work with some of the top-notch people. And those people were two-star generals. And you begin to wonder how they tick and why they think the way they do. And I remember one general in particular, General Hardy, Dennis Hardy. And he said this statement that I want to share with you today that stuck with me for a long time. He said, Ron, there's not one of us as important and as powerful as all of us. We are a team. We as commissioners sitting here, believe me, have gone over more things than we discussed this morning. There's times we shed tears here. There's times we're so angry we can't see or see straight. We are not your enemies. We are you. We are the public. You see one side sometimes of what's going on, but we see the repercussions of how we can put out a fire and go on and move forward and do something positive on the situation. That's what we're looking at. We're not, again, please don't think we're your enemy. We lay in that wake nights thinking how we can make things better. None of us want to wear masks. All of us think this is crazy. And all of us believe what's going on is crazy.
Take them off.
So, but we have leadership, higher levels from the federal level to the state level down, that we're taught to follow instructions. And I got what you're saying. But if we all comply and get over this with medicines, vaccines are here, we'll be out of this in no time. But I, we've already lost more people than I announced a number of months ago of even losing one. So I'm real upset about that.
So when, when, what is the criteria for when the masks come off? I've never heard, never heard.
I wish I was smart enough to tell you.
What is it? What is it?
So if we know that these masks don't work, we know that they don't work. I can, I can give you, your daughter, for instance, that you shared with us, I have an employee, faithful, faithful mask wearer, will not go out in public, will not go with, you know, around people. Soon as she, soon as she, so soon as she goes shopping at a bigger place around more people, they both have masks on, they both get COVID. What's the point? What's the point? Are we wearing these just because you said it? We're, we're, we're government officials and we have to show that we're following a rule?
Kind of a point of order too, because this is really is in the back and forth discussion we've received comments.
It's frustrating. It's frustrating.
You know, there's.
That they're more for reception and not for health.
Commissioners in lots of counties and I think Ron gave you his personal opinion for himself.
Yeah, I don't sleep at night. I don't, I sleep good at night. I'll give you a few calls.
So, but, but anyway, are there any other comments? And otherwise, we're going to move on to the next section.
Well, my brother lives in California and he goes golfing with the four of them.
Yeah, go ahead and stand up, give your name, please.
Name, address, picture, photo.
Mary Rock, nine forty Lock Road. My brother lives in California and he said that there was four of them and they go golfing together and one in the group wore a mask faithfully. The other three never did, which one died. The one that wore the mask died of COVID. That's just an example.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. And so the next item we have on our agenda is the Board of County Officers. Brad?
Okay, in your package, you've got the staffing report, which would be the year-to-date, completed in December by Diane. And I think you've probably heard most of her report this morning on that, but I don't have anything there sort of a report on it. You also got your?
Question, Brad, I live here.
Okay.
Full staff?
For the most part, we are, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I live here, so I shouldn't be asking that.
I know the county attorney's office is down one staff member that the opening that happened earlier this week, that wouldn't be reflected on this. Sheriff's Department's kind of a hit, a moving target right now. Until Monday, that should be pretty close to full staff with the new administration coming in. Other than that, I think we're, we're real close.
I don't know, I see we've got a hundred and forty.
Three.
Well, no, well, yeah. Total hundred and forty, yeah, a hundred and forty-four in November. So I didn't know what to, you know, a hundred and forty-five, if we had everybody in position or not.
I think we're, I think we're real close. I mean, at least on, on my departments, they are, so. For the first time in a long time, I think Barton's at full staff and that's historically been the, the department that's been difficult to, to keep, keep staff. So we've got a trainee in nine-one-one that's, that's in, in, in the process of being trained and will be for a couple more months. So, but my reports in there, she's doing well, so knock on wood, I guess. Year-to-date budget reports, it looks like from that, everybody finished the year, all departments finished it within, within the budget, right, Janelle?
That's great, yes.
So we're proud of them for doing that. The sales tax report for the month of December looks really good. We got in the hundred and fourteen thousand, well, almost hundred and fifteen thousand, which put us at one point three seven six million for the year. And we had projected one point three even. So we're about seventy-six thousand more than what we projected on the special sales tax. Same thing applies. It came in at a hundred and nine and we had projected, I guess you don't project it, but the total was one point three. So I think, again, that goes to a lot of people who are shopping at home and not going out, you know, staying, staying local and, you know, I know speaking from my household, we're staying at home, buying the groceries and not doing a lot of traveling. So I guess if there's a, it's a bright side to all this stuff, that might be, that might be it, I don't know. A shimmer, so. Scheduling, I'll be, I'll be scheduling a PBC meeting for sometime here in February. We won't wait till March, April, or May and forget about it this year like we did in the past. So we'll be setting that up probably at nine-thirty, beginning of your work session. I mentioned it, or I briefed you in the work session that we're working to get the order together for three sets of the extrication tools for the fire departments, the jaws of life. We're going to be updating those and, and we've got the bid that was submitted in the middle of last year and they tell me it's still good. So it's just a matter of figuring out exactly what each department's going to be able to put towards that and then we'll make up the difference, so. And then we talked in the work session about the dump truck that we've got to blow an engine in and we're going to be getting bids on, and looking at the options of either replacing the engine or replacing the whole truck, which is a smarter move. Could very well have that information back to you by next week, so. I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
I got several things here. The, the first one I have is on the resolution for the foreclosure on the past due real estate that have not paid their taxes over the period of time that we require. And there's forty parcels of real estate and I have prepared the resolution for the board to approve. It requires the three signatures for the, to, for me to move forward with that. And I would offer that to the board. And if the board does it, why then I will prepare, finish preparing the petition to file it. The title companies have done their research already to turn that over so I know who, who needs to be named as the defendant in this. Some of these are several governmental entities. And so even after we file, the sale will be later because we're dealing with some governmental entities that have additional time to answer. So I have prepared that resolution for the board if you want to address that. And I'll have a second and a third item after that.
We need to adopt the resolution today is what your?
Correct.
Wish is? And then I'll probably just get a little bit of help here from Barb because we have several resolutions that we've already numbered. So make it zero, one, zero, seven. Zero, one, zero, seven.
Twenty-one.
Two, one, E. As an elephant. And that is, so we can go ahead and take this up at this time, authorize them the judicial foreclosure and sell real estate. foreclosure and sell real estate property in interest, real estate in Dixon County, where upon the taxes and special assessments levied against each tract, the real estate remain due and unpaid, and all move that we adopt resolution 010721E.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on that motion and second? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And this is one that needs all three of our signatures. So there you go, Ron.
Well, Doug's here. I should have mentioned earlier, I got my brother, we were at a cattle last night, and he wanted to know why Dr. Holmes had closed down Casey's. And I said, that's a, Miss Don, where they closed themselves down for a person that had a high temperature and they were going to clean the place out. So that's how rumors get started.
Dr. Holmes hasn't closed any place down, so. Matter of fact, I didn't even know there was a problem with Casey's till he just went.
Well, they were just closed down for about 24 hours.
Okay, we'll go on to notices and communications.
I, I have some more.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Doug.
The next one I have is for the agreement to provide indigent defense services for the county. And this is the time when we would renew that contract for four attorneys. And at this particular time, the contract is ready to be approved, and that would only require your signature, Lynn. But then I will attach the four contract, the four attorneys' signed documents for this. And because of the caseload right now, we are one attorney short of meeting the load. So the court's been appointing me repeatedly because there isn't enough attorneys around to be able to do it. So I've been filling in that time spot. But I'm not on the yearly contract, and I don't want to be on the yearly contract. I'll just fill in for whatever period of time I need to until at such time as things level out. The criminal docket is significant and the juvenile docket is significant. And so Judge Collet's asked me if I will continue to take appointments until that. So, but I'm not on that contract. But if I'm covering for the whole month, then I'm submitting a bill for that timeframe consistent with what the others are doing.
Okay.
But I don't want to be on for the whole year. I don't want that, I don't mind doing the work, but I don't want that to be in the contract that I'm adding to that budget, because we don't have that much budget to work with.
Question for you, Doug.
Yes.
What's the opportunity or, I should say, opportunity to be getting more attorneys in Dixon County?
Well, I don't know. You know, when I started here years ago, there were a lot of attorneys and they're just not coming to the smaller communities. They're going to the bigger cities for a variety of reasons, I suppose. But I, I hope that there's some who come in because of quality of life here. This is a good community and it's a good county to, to work in. I'm so busy, I can't put in any more hours. I have the disadvantage of being a workaholic. And so my wife calls me and said, Doug, are you coming home tonight? And otherwise, I would just keep going. I'm too old now to do the all-nighters like I used to, but I would if I wasn't getting the call to come home.
Okay. Now, this one is not a resolution, so it's just an agreement for indigent defense services. The four attorneys that are named are Jocelyn, Lucas Randall, Mitch Christians, Mark Guilfoyle, Jennifer Dahlstrom. And so if we have a motion to have me sign this on behalf of the commission.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't add your name to it, so appreciate that.
I have one other thing, if you would let me address
Yes.
This point. I've heard comments today, and, and I appreciate the fact that the board allows all to communicate. And I appreciate all these folks coming in to share. But this is the, this is the first time I've heard individual criticisms about one person or another person or that. People, good and honorable people can disagree. And they can disagree upon the facts, and they can look at it and say, well, I think, I think this sweater's black, and I think it's a little more blue. And that can be, good and honorable people can differ, but they can't say, should not be able to say, well, this person wearing this is worthless because he thinks it's blue, or he thinks it's black. And I have the privilege of working, seeing the board work, and working with Janelle, Brad, and of course Barb, and the other departments. And they're hardworking people. They're hardworking people. There hasn't been a time that I haven't been able to get a hold of Brad. I've called him late at night, early in the morning before other people are up. I can reach him at any time. And the same is true for Janelle. I can go to her with a problem because I do the lawsuits for the county and defend the lawsuits. And so I have to rely upon staff to be able to do it, and they're excellent. And as I was sitting in here and I heard your comments, and you said, well, I'm closer to Forrest Gump than I am Einstein. Well, let me tell you about this. Einstein was brilliant, but he didn't have a lot of common sense. Forrest Gump had a lot of common sense. And when this started, Lynn had pointed out about the guy behind us up here, and that's Dwight Eisenhower. And I'll tell you a little story. I had the privilege of being in his honor guard for his funeral. And before that, I was a little kid in probably the fifth grade and got to sit from here to the podium from Eisenhower as he made the dedication of, I think it was probably the library. I was a little kid and our class got to be brought over there. Well, if you go down and you look at Eisenhower's work, you'll find this. When D-Day took place, he had written two notes, two notes. One of the notes said, despite the efforts of the fighting force we have, our invasion was unsuccessful. If there's blame to lie, blame to put, put it on me. And then he wrote one that said, because of the fighting force and their sacrifices, our invasion has been successful. He didn't put it on generals, he didn't put it on lazy troops, he didn't put it on anybody. He owned it himself. Whatever it was going to be, he took the blame for the loss, he gave the credit for the win. And, and that's what he did. That's why he's up there. Because if he had lost, that, there wouldn't, he wouldn't have been the president, and, and it would not have been successful, and there would have been something different if the United States hadn't been successful at Normandy and getting a foothold. Chances are, there would have been a peace and it would have been an entirely different world. And so as I listen to the comments today, I appreciate them. Every one of us, you, Ron, you said the same thing. I don't want to wear a mask. None of us want to wear the mask, but we are. And good and honorable people can disagree without being bad people. And I, I, I hope that there's not individual attacks upon money that comes in, because I know how much you worked, and I was at the meetings, and that was saving the county money the way that it was done. Absolutely excellent. And I appreciate all the work that you guys put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, notices and communications. We had some thank you notes that have come to the commission. This is in regards to the certificates that were given to employees at the local grocery store, and that was given to all employees back between the Thanksgiving-Christmas time. And we also are getting a best wishes in the new year, North Central Kansas planning. And then also, I have a letter from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. They're sending out in regards to appreciation for what our health department has done. And, and they just have mentioned that they know all departments in all counties are, are under a great deal of stress and therefore have put some of their resources in place. And so they're just kind of applauding and thanking on those that they call as the Kansas Health Department heroes. And want to express appreciation of the local health department staff and local board of health. And that's from KDHE. Were there any other communications that anyone received that want to bring up at this time?
The only communication I got was the type, the text from the, that Craig gave us earlier than that before the meeting here, and it was the support of masks.
Next item we have, we'll go on, there's, moving past the unfinished business, we will go to, before unfinished business, we have an introduction of various resolutions. The first one is a resolution for the GAAP waiver for 2021. And that's just saying that we'll follow the general accounting procedures. And that's a standard housekeeping item. And so is there a motion to adopt that resolution in regards to that 010721A?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion?
Are we going to have to do more than a single audit this year?
We will have to do a single audit for 2020, and our audit firm, Barney and Associates, is already prepared for that, so.
This is the last year for Barney?
This is the last year for Barney. The RFPs will go out hopefully this month.
Okay. Okay, so I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item is resolution for the annual reappointment and designations to represent Dixon County for 2021. And that is resolution 010721. It includes, and it can all be in one action, is the appointment of the county health officer, Dr. Holmes, to set the courthouse operation for office hours 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily for 2021 with holiday closures as set forth in the handbook. Set the official work-study session for the commission 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, and that should be 9:30 a.m. to 11:00. Until conclusion after the 11 o'clock meeting, designates the county newspaper as the Abilene Reflector Chronicle. To appoint Lynn Peterson, Central Kansas Mental Health Center board member representing the county for 2021. To appoint representative commissioner Ron Roller to the North Central Kansas Juvenile Detention Board for 2021. Also to appoint the representative for North Central Kansas, representative for the Planning Commission 2021 is Commissioner Chamberlain. It also designates the official depositories of the county, 2021 UMB Bank, Abilene Branch of Astor Bank, Solomon State Bank, Solomon Branch, Solomon State Bank, Abilene Branch, Pinnacle Bank of Abilene, Dixon County Bank of Enterprise, Central National Bank of Harrington, Citizens State Bank of Woodbine, First National Bank of Hope, Hope Branch, First National Bank of Hope, Harrington Branch, First Bank of Kansas, Abilene Branch. It also adopts the schedule fee for 2021 to be published in the county website. It adopts the 2021 payroll calendar as submitted by the HR director this morning. It also adopts the official employee pay grade schedule for 2021.
I have a condition to make to that, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not, but we need to make sure that whoever's going to be on Dixon County Economic Development Corporation is appointed every year.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's my opinion. If you don't agree with it, that's one, you don't
If you're looking at consistency.
Well, we know to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes, that we would have a representative for Dixon County Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, and that would be Commissioner Peterson.
Okay.
The next year.
Okay. With that addition, is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve 010721.
Okay.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of 010721. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item we have is resolution to appoint the planning commission members. We have Mr. Hedstrom and Donita Feldbusch. What's Mr. Hedstrom's first name?
James.
James.
Should have been on the resolution.
I just
You know, it is, and I'm reading off the notes here
Okay.
Off our agenda. And, and we do have these resolutions that we all will need to sign afterwards. So that is actually, that involves
He's, he's 011721B.
B. Okay, so we'll do his first then. I'll move that we adopt that resolution 010721B.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next one is for Donita Feldbusch, and that also is for the same thing, planning commission, 010721C.
Question, I mean, for, what is her term? I, I, three years? Okay, okay. I'm moved, we, we need to publish a 10721C.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next one we have is to establish the grant sewer district. That's 010721D.
That's for Dennis Everett and Bill Vanderkreet to reappoint that sewer district number two.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yes, so we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? That's for Dennis Everett and Bill Vanderkreet, three-year terms. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so I believe that's all we have as far as resolutions. We'll move on to other business, and we need to have approval of an engagement letter from Barney and Associates for the county 2020 audit. Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion for Barney.
We have the motion and the second for Barney and Associates for the 2020 audit. Any other discussion?
What is the cost for this year? No?
So it's going to be $1,943 plus an additional $2,500 for the single audit.
$1,000?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Saying 1,900 would be a pretty good bargain.
That would be good, yes, yes.
I had questioned whether we're getting what we're paying for.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we've got the motion and the second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have, another housekeeping matter. This is a quitclaim deed. This is to transfer the ownership of properties, the property at 1712 South Buckeye to the Chisholm Trail Extension District, number 20. And I think that just needs one signature.
I'll make a motion to approve the quitclaim deed. It's in the grill.
And I'll second it.
So we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is reorganization of the county commission offices for chairman and vice chairman, and we can do that in one motion.
I'll make a motion to let Lynn be chairman.
And for vice chairman.
Craig.
Okay, we have a motion that I'll, for the next year, be chairman, vice chairman would be Commissioner Chamberlain. Any other, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries two to one. Congratulations.
Explain that when you talk about how it comes from the 2-1 vote.
Oh, okay. Yeah. We could have gotten two nays there. Okay. Okay, I believe that's all we have.